Good evening and thank you for viewing the November 18th regular meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. We want to thank the community and encourage everyone to keep up the efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19 in Arcata. We know that by wearing masks and practicing social distancing has helped keep our curve flat and community healthy and businesses open. Please support safe shopping by masking up in Arcata. If you wish to make public comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or at any of the individual agenda items, there are two ways to do so. One, if you were logged on under the Zoom meeting webinar, click on raise your hand on the right-hand side of the screen. When it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak, the clerk will unmute you. You will have two minutes to comment. Two, you can access the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen. Enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Press star nine on your phone. This will raise your hand when it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak, the clerk will unmute your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted. You will have two minutes to comment. If you would like, please join me for a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Winkler.
Here.
Vice Mayor Patino.
Here.
Councilmember Pereira.
Here.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
All present.
Right. Next is ceremonial matters. First is a proclamation in recognition of the Great American Smokeout November 19th, 2020. Whereas the American Cancer Society encourages all tobacco users to join the Great American Smokeout and quit smoking for at least one day. And whereas smoking remains the leading cause of preventable preventable death in the United States. And whereas tobacco companies are attempting to block the new statewide ban on flavored tobacco. It was designed to prevent kids from getting addicted. And whereas local surveys show our retail environment is filled with tobacco products and even stores with pharmacies, providing healthcare services consult tobacco products, giving a mixed message that tobacco is safe. And whereas the predominance of tobacco products makes it easy for youth to start smoking and harder for smokers to quit. And whereas there are many free resources to help adults and teenagers quit smoking and vaping. And whereas on Thursday, November 19th, from noon to 3:00 PM, there will be a free quick hit giveaway at Eureka Natural Foods located at 1450 Broadbent Street. Now therefore be be proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes and supports the American Cancer Society's Great American Smokeout on Thursday, November 19th, 2020, and encourages all residents who use tobacco products to consider that they do not have to stop smoking. Just start with day one, dated November 18th, 2020, and signed by myself as mayor. Second is proclamation designating November 28th to December 31st, 2020 is the season of wonder and light in Arcata. Whereas Arcata Main Street and local businesses are coming together for the annual celebration of the holiday season. The season of wonder and light in the heart of Arcata. Everyone is invited to enjoy holiday sights, sounds, and cheer throughout the month. And whereas Arcata Main Street Small Business Saturday event on Saturday, November 21st, from 11:00 AM to 5:30 PM shall include local business gift previews and promotions, a special edition farmer's market, an opportunity to add wishes to a tree that will be lit on at 5:30 PM, and other holiday cheer surprises. And whereas Arcata Main Street will feature businesses offering extended shopping hours and special events on Friday, throughout the season of wonder and light, including Friday, December 4th, which will feature the lighting of the Great Creek at Jacoby Storehouse at 5:30 PM, which will also be live streamed. And whereas on Friday, December 18th, Arcata Main Street will create a winter wonderland. A walking tour of the Arcata Plaza decorated by local business sponsors, featuring festive holiday characters, crease for children, and downtown joy. And whereas Arcata Main Street encourages residents and visitors alike to patronize the local businesses, supporting this community event series. Enjoy the beautiful array of lights on the historic Arcata Plaza throughout the season to soak up Arcata's friendly, small-town holiday atmosphere. It encourages our community to choose Humboldt and try our local stores first when it comes to holiday shopping. Now therefore be proclaimed by the city council of the city of Arcata that November 28th through December 31st, 2020, is the season of wonder and light in Arcata. The council also wishes to recognize Arcata Main Street for its constant efforts to promote and enhance Arcata's identity, economy, and cultural spirit. Dated today, November 18th, 2020, and by signed by myself as mayor. Next is early oral communications. This 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes, and we can take up to seven speakers. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press star nine if you are calling in on the phone and wish to make a comment. Do we have any persons wishing to make a public comment?
There is no public comment at this time.
All right, I will close public comment. Next is consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. A approved the minutes of the city council meeting of November 4th, 2020. B biweekly report on general warrants. See adopt resolution number 201-22, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata amending the class and pay resolution, International Union of Operating Engineers Local Number Three, to reflect changes for construction specialist position. The adopt resolution number 201-14, approving an application for grant funds from the Proposition 68 statewide park development and community revitalization program for Carlson Park improvements assessors, parcel number 507-531-012 and 507-141-050. He approved the Redwood Park renovation project, California State Parks per capita grant. Adopt California Environmental Quality Act sequel exemptions and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Would any member of the council like to remove an item for separate discussion? Would any member of the public like to remove an item for separate discussion?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right. Next is it's all business.
Need a motion on the consent calendar?
Oh, sorry. I'm going to move to I move to approve this consent calendar.
All second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Watson.
Hi.
Councilmember Pereira.
I.
Vice Mayor Patina.
He's so close. He's coming. There you go, Paul. Go ahead and say aye again.
Aye.
Thank you.
I vote aye. Next is all business financial forecast of adopted budget for fiscal years 2020, 2021. May I have a staff report from city manager Deemer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Let me go ahead and just pull this up. It's becoming a pretty familiar slideshow for all of you, I think. But this is should actually say November. So our fiscal forecasting, as the council knows, when we pass the budget for the 2021 fiscal year, we made significant cuts to the budget and had significant concerns around some of our major revenue sources. So monthly, we're just providing sort of brief updates at the council meetings and then very detailed updates in your packets. And myself and our finance director, Andreas Starhevsky, are both here tonight to answer any questions that you might have. For updates this month, we still have both some reassurances and some concerns. I think the council and the community is aware that Humboldt County was moved to Tier Red for our COVID response by the state late last week, further restricting some of our retail and restaurant occupancy loads. So that's of concern for our sales tax and TUT tax potentials for the city of Arcata. Several of our general fund sources are still trending lower, such as our recreation fees, our rentals, and our parking and enforcement fees. While our hotels are filled, we also recognize that because of fire damage and current COVID climate, that many of these days are going beyond 30 days, and we're seeing some exemptions from some of our standard hotel tax that we might receive during this season. And then our wastewater continues to trend about a 1% below what our projected estimates were. But our rate changes go into effect on January 1st, so we do suspect that we'll see that trend upward before June 30th. On the reassurances, which you'll see in the data, is that our sales tax and what I'll call maybe our measure G tax or a TUT tax, it continues to come in at or above our projections for the year. And that the hotel tax so far is being remitted at projected or at higher rates. So just to take you through the tables that you're starting to get very used to as we just sort of fill in the numbers. So we're now starting to track in the fiscal year 2021 actuals. This is on page 118 of your packet. This is for sales tax accruals. And what you'll see is so far we are trending actually above last year's fiscal year actual for the two reporting periods payment month, September and October. This would have been sales tax that was actually spent in Arcata in July and August. So right now that really is right on track. Typically, that third month, when we get that reporting data in this month, we'll see sort of the cleanup and see how that rounds out for the for the actual first quarter there, what we call Q3. You're going to see the same trend as we look at our TUT or our measure G tax in Arcata is for the first two reporting periods of this first quarter are actually trending a little bit higher than we would have for the first two reporting periods in 1920 fiscal year. But again, we'll have a cleanup year or cleanup month that will come in in November, so we'll have a better sense of that within a month. On our bed tax or a transient occupancy tax, we do have a full Q3 quarter three revenues here. And you'll see that we're just actually down about $3,000 from the previous fiscal year. So that's a real actual. Just going back, so that's about 2% being down for Q3. Going back and looking at our Q2, just as a reminder, during the real months where hotel stays were restricted, we were down 26% for our TOT. There was some listserv questions floating around California tax personnel this week, and there's just a huge variety. I've seen cities that were down 45 to 50% in TOT tax and some that were up as much as 10 or 12%. So really very dependent on where you are. Are people trying to get out of high COVID regions and come to your space? Or are people simply not visiting your space because you have high COVID rates? Seem to make a big difference across the state in TOT right now. Sales tax, we talked a lot about this as we were passing our budget. The governor had put in two different programs where retail establishments and restaurants could defer sales tax. And we had about 194,000 that appeared to not come in to the city of Arcata. So either that was being deferred through one of those programs by individual businesses, or simply some of those businesses have gone out of out of business and we might not ever see that sales tax come in. But between the months of July and August that we've seen those deferred payments come in, we have recouped for the sales on the sales tax side, 34,410. And on our TUT, we've recovered 52,239. So for last fiscal year, it looks like we do still have about 107,000 of deferred taxes that, you know, we may still see some starting to trickle in. One of the programs had a 12-month repayment period, so we could continue to see some of that come in. But clearly, all of that 107,000 will not come in. Again, this is really to close out last fiscal year, and we didn't count on that revenue coming in as we set our budget for this year anyway. Our water and sewer revenue continues to trend downward from where we were in terms of revenues last year, but we did expect that. We expected especially significant water reductions in the commercial and restaurant sectors. And so our water revenues are actually coming in exactly at projected levels. And as we talked about, the wastewater is trending just about 1% below projected levels. But we're still hoping to make that up the second half of the fiscal year when the water rate or wastewater rate increases go into effect January 1st. So current outlook outlook HDL, who also tracks our sales tax for the city, shared that statewide, the Q2 sales tax, the quarter two sales tax was down about 16.3%. Arcata trended down just about the same as the state average at about six, just a little under that at 16%. San Francisco, just by contrast, it may be just more interest in anything else, was actually down 43% in their sales tax revenue for Q2. But what was really notable about some of the data was the far north of which Arcata and all of Humboldt County is part of as a region was actually only down 4.4%. So there were certainly some areas in the far north that did better than Arcata. But overall, we're still trending a little bit better than maybe many areas of the state. The mid-year budget, well, we're really look detailed line-by-line item is scheduled for February. But just to kind of reiterate what we've shared the last few months, the initial indications show that we are tracking lower revenues than last year, but they are still at or per or above the projections that we based our budget on for the 2021 fiscal year. So with that, both the finance director and I are available if the council has questions.
So Vice Mayor Patina.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Watson.
I don't have any questions. Thanks for all your work.
Councilmember Pereira.
No comments or questions. Thank you.
The only comment I have is that I'm glad that we were conservative and that our budget forecasts are are tracking our revenues well. Thank you very much for that. Do we have any public comments on this item?
For those that might be interested in commenting on the financial forecast, a reminder, if you're logged into Zoom, click on raise your hand on the right-hand side of your screen. And if you call them via phone, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, I will close out this item. Next is declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. May I have a staff report from city manager Deemer, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This item is a very routine item before you know that we are renewing our declaration of local emergency related to the coronavirus as per our Muni code every 14 days. But we have brought this instead of on consent calendar before you tonight on all business to review a proposed delay in an enforcement of an ordinance that the council passed last year to support businesses during this COVID-19 response period. The council will reflect on back in March of 2020, just before COVID really hit. We passed ordinance 1527. The purpose was to prohibit single-use plastic foodware and encourage use of reusable foodware within our, you know, takeout delis and restaurants. Enforcement of this was scheduled to begin January 1st, 2021. With the impact to COVID-19, food service establishments have been very limited in their ability to comply with some of the provisions of the ordinance. Between September and October, city staff contacted 71 of our food service establishments to get a better understanding of their current implementation of our ordinance and the challenges that they were experiencing in their response to COVID-19. Many of the businesses have already switched to their single-use foodware to a fiber and compostable material that the ordinance requires. But most of the businesses had not begun charging the 25-cent fee if somebody were to use one of those disposable food containers, which is also required by the ordinance and which would be enforceable on January 1st. The feedback that we received from the businesses was that it was really place an additional burden at this time as they're trying to respond to the coronavirus to have to also charge this 25-cent fee. City staff also contacted Humboldt County Environmental Health to ensure that the ordinance is compliant with state law because the governor had for a period of time relieved businesses of both the single-use plastic bake ordinances that were throughout the state as well as some of the single-use food containers. And although the ordinance does comply, and we could enforce it with the current shelter in place and health orders that are in place right now in the state of California, it would require additional sanitation, handwashing steps, and a new written protocol from each of our businesses to comply, to have the county approve compliance with being able to take in somebody's container that they would bring to a store, fill with, you know, a takeout food beverage, food or beverage, and then hand back to the customer. So staff is recommending at this point that we just delay the enforcement of ordinance 1527 until July 1st of 2021. So to buy a six-month period before enforcement so that we can support our businesses during the COVID-19 response. And we have staff member Emily Benby, as well as Julie Neander and Mark on the call if there are additional questions.
So I will take questions and comments from council, council member Pereira.
I, yes. Actually, before this came to us for the agenda, this was actually something I'd been reflecting on and going, ah, that's supposed to be starting soon, that enforcement. And I do think it makes a lot of sense. I really appreciate the outreach that staff did to the businesses, and it is really heartening to hear that a lot of them did already start to make that transition, especially given that we passed this at a point right before COVID hit. So definitely heartened to see that effort. And I would be supportive of us delaying that enforcement at this time. But curious, obviously, to, you know, have a have a discussion about it if there's other thoughts.
Councilmember Watson.
I think it makes sense to delay it. And I'm just wondering, is this something we need to motion on in the end?
Yes, we'll need a motion to continue the emergency ordinance and to support the delayed enforcement of ordinance. 15 special number I'll pull for you here. 15.
1527, cool.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Patina.
No questions. Thank you.
Well, I support this. Clearly, it's not it's it's not prudent to allow people to bring in their own containers under the circumstances with the pandemic. Do we have any members of the public who indicate that they want to comment on the side of?
There are no public comment for this item.
Right, I would entertain a motion on this item. I'll move to declare continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic and delay the enforcement of ordinance number 1527 until July 1st, 2021.
Second.
Oh. You can have it, Vice Mayor.
Too slow. We have a motion and a second. I will do a roll call. Councilmember Pereira.
Aye.
Councilmember Watson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patina.
Aye.
I vote aye. Next is new business item A, receive an update on the city's dig ones and pavement lifespan preservation policy and and recommend to adopt resolution number 201-20, establishing and approving a dig ones and pavement lifespan preservation policy within the city right right away. May I have a staff report from city engineer Country?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, face staff and member of the public. Today, I'm here to provide a quick update on cities dig ones and payment lifespan reservation policy. Receive some feedback from council and public if possible. And if there are no significant changes to the policy, get an approval on this policy. Just to give you an overview, our department in conjunction with other department has been working on this policy for a while. The main objective of the policy is to streamline all infrastructure utility and non-utility projects in the city right away and minimize any unnecessary street cuts and disruption to public. The concept is pretty simple. When the street is cut open for one project, we want to make sure that all current and future infrastructure utility telecommunications needs are taken into account. So we don't have to cut up streets again in few years. This policy applies mainly to utility, non-utility and telecommunications projects that exceeds 600 feet. That's like a two, three blocks off and digging or boring in the city right away. Also, this could be implemented to small section of the street if it's feasible and if it's benefit to public. Most critical portion of this policy is that when it was feasible, it would be required a project applicant to install a two-inch conduit in the city right away if the street is a major street, which could be a collector or arterial, and it is within the planned route of our fiber optics lines in the city limits. Currently, as you know, we don't have a map that shows all the fiber optics lines in the city limit. But we are working with California Center for Rural Policy Staff to create a fiber optic roadmap for our area, and that map will be used as a guiding document to implement this policy. In this, in addition to this policy, in addition, this policy requires telecommunications companies to notify similar companies in the area of the proposed project so that other companies could take advantage of the project and potentially team up and save some money and time on the project. This policy also expands on the encouragement portion of process and condition. And the critical element of that is on a new street, no excavation will be allowed on newly paved street at least for five year. Unless there's some exceptions and, you know, exceptions will be allowed only if there's an emergency work. If there's some repair leaks to be done, there's some repairs to the leak. And if it benefits the public. If an exception is granted, the applicant has to repair the street to the satisfaction of the city engineer or city manager, and it has to meet the city standards. For example, if it's a newly street and any utility company like PGE or AT&amp;T who wants to do a small trench for a house, and that will not be allowed anymore, that will be allowed. However, the applicant or the project applicant or the utility company has to do more paving than which it's required currently. Currently, when they come in, they just do a trench which is two feet wide, which is not adequate. And, you know, it creates more problem for the streets or for the leakage water goes in the trenches. So it will be required to have a wider trench. And if there's a small patchwork, and we will require them to pave the full travel lane of the street. So the idea is to minimize, you know, payment cutting and have increase the life of the payment surface. Our this current policy is aligned with city council goals and meets the city council policy objectives. Currently, the city staff is not asking for any funds for this policy implementation. We believe that any review time on this kind of projects will be, we can collect through encouragement fee or our standard fee schedule. And in future, if And in future, if city plans to. Invest some money on those additional two inch conduits for future projects or any similar projects. Then we will come back to council and ask for those funds, but currently we are not seeking those funds. So as I said, you know, this policy is aligned with the council goals and other. Cities in California has adopted similar policies and they've been successful. So we want to start this policy in the city, so this is our first step. Which is combination of a lot of cities, big one policy and favorite investment, favorite position policies. So if you have any comments on that, we are, we will welcome comments and we'll put in the policy. We have also given this policy to our local. Cities and companies and hopefully we'll hear some feedback on that. And and the goal is ultimately to hold region to have a similar big ones policy that could be in place. So with that, you know, if you have any more questions, I'll answer the questions. For this policy, Nancy Diamond and Dave Lloyd helped me in this one, so. If there's other questions, they may be also able to answer those questions, so with that, please ask any questions you have.
Council member Watson.
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Council member Ferrera.
No, this, this looks really good, really excited about it, takes a lot of sense. Thank you for all your work on it and thanks to the folks at CCRP too.
Vice Mayor Patino.
Yeah, I have a question, this two inch conduit, I'm assuming it's for fiber optic and. TV cable telephone. Low voltage stuff, is that correct?
That's, yes, that's correct, potentially mainly for fiber and for the regional use in future. But that could be two inches pretty wide and like one inch conduit could take only fiber, but two inch conduit could take additional lines in that conduit. So yes.
And suppose that conduit's going down a street and some individual wants to tie into the fiber. How do they do that?
Well, we have not developed that part of the policy yet or how that being implemented, so if, for example, if there's a sun and sun link. For example, A T and D wants to put a conduit. In a trench and they contact early and they say, okay, we also want to be part of that, so they will have two conduits. In that trench and then there's an applicant right next to the road who wants to do a tunneling, so. They can use that conduit to provide that service. It will be like similar to like a water meter on a water line which is on the main street. For one house like.
Sure. Okay, say for example sometime in the future, we decide to. Run fiber to the houses and become a municipal utility. Could we use this?
We have not gone that far, but potentially, yes, if there's a conduit, it's possible, so this will allow us. That this will give us that flexibility in future to have that. To explore that option.
Great, thank you, Natra, thanks for your work.
Natra, could you explain the significance of the wider trench in terms of preserving the the street?
Yeah, definitely, I know over the years we have seen, you know, we paved the street and right after paving next day. A T and T or P G N E comes in a last by encroachment permit and they want to add a gas line to one unit. And that trench is only a foot wide or twelve inch wide because they have an average only two inch gas line, so they just dig twelve inches. But what happens with the twelve inch line or twelve inch trench is, you know, it has much more potential for. Water to get in, you know, it doesn't get compacted well, it's first of all, it's small, so it doesn't get compacted, it's. Degrees over time easily, so I think if the trench is wider and it's. You can distribute the load evenly in a bigger surface, there will be less potential for breakage of that joint. And we have seen this recently, you know, on some of the projects where we have. Smaller trench versus the wider trenches or wider paving, you know, the wider paving does not degrade. Right away, but it's a smaller trench, you know, it sinks easily and, you know, it's hard to compact. On a small trench, they cannot get full compaction of the base and the material, so that's why it sinks, so the wider trench helps in that aspect.
So how would this affect when, in the example that Vice Mayor Patino gave of of somebody wanting to connect fiber to the home? How would this change in policy affect that situation?
Well, just for an example purpose, you know, let's say there's one house does not have a fiber optics and there is a fiber optic line. On the street and they will not be able to just cut the conduit because I think they need to connect. To a full box or some sort of a manhole, you know, it's not developed fully yet, so not not say how it will be done, but. If that's done and they somehow have to dig a small trench. Yes, so the small trench will not be just a narrow trench. Depending on the age of the street because it's the age, the age of the street is more than five years. And they could potentially have a narrow trench, but if it's less than five years, then they have to. Ensure that the width of the trench is wider than two feet.
Let's see, is there any penalty for a company? Asking for an exception before the five year timeframe. Is if we considered a, some kind of disincentive to discourage companies from doing this. Let's say prematurely, if you recall.
Well, maybe I didn't follow the question there, yes, if I follow the question, yes, there is options like, you know, if there isn't some emergency, then. They can cut the trench before five years. But if you're asking that to penalize them to. Cut a trench on a newly paved street, though we don't have that option at this point. To penalizing them, that only the penalized would be to they have to meet the city standards if they want to do any trenching. And then there is exceptions on those, you know, the city manager can allow some exceptions and there are. Some list of items that could be, they will be accepted.
What I was thinking about is if we want to encourage them to. Group the their their request or and 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 to discourage and accept an emergency cases from making these changes, I was wondering if there any. Financial incentives or financial penalties that we might consider to encourage them or discourage them. From doing more frequent digging in the street.
Currently, we don't have that and it's a case by case basis, I would say. We have to see them, but for example, you know, we just paid our Bayside Road and. Even before the notes of completion was filed, we got a call from P G N E that they had an emergency and they had to make a small cut on that. So, you know, we had to allow that at this point, but in future it'll be a bit different how it will be allowed. I see, so.
If I could just jump in for a moment and point out that there is an option to use the city's administrative penalties provisions. Once this becomes a formal policy of the city, then any violation of the policy. Would be subject to enforcement through the administrative citations protocol that the city has.
So I can understand if something is a is an emergency that that needs to be done, of course. But if if it's, if something is being done for the for the convenience of the company. And is not an emergency, I wonder if that is, would be handled differently in some way.
Well, in that case, there will be violation of this and then we can. Use our administrative penalty fees. And charge them that fee. It's similar to a nuisance in some sense, you know, they are doing the work without city's permission and they are not following city's code, so. At that point, we can apply our penalties. Companies and hopefully we don't have to go there.
Right, and nature of the ideas, you know, they could potentially do horizontal drilling, they could bore. That cable in if it was really, you know, cost effective for the company to do that and to not wait out. The period of time that we are not going to allow them to trench in the street for it.
Sure. So what I, what I was thinking is, is that if, in effect. Are there, are there situations in which it has, as you're, as you're saying Karen, it has enough of of a financial benefit for. For somebody to want to. Do something at earlier stages, there's some way effectively in in. Allowing it, but charging them enough money so it wouldn't be done very often and that. They would absorb the extra cost of 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 having to do repairs or restoring the street.
Maybe I can take a stab at this. You know, I think we would have to take it up case by case and I understand, you know, your your point, Mayor, which is. We want a deterrent, we don't want to be just charging the city's costs over and over again, we want to keep people. From digging up the street and just. Paying whatever penalty it is as a cost of doing business. And we really would have to look at it case by case, we have, and you know, in addition to the administrative penalties. As Natra pointed out, this would be part of the encroachment permit process and. If it is, if the encroachment permit itself is violated, then we would have. The ability to use the encroachment permit violation process, which includes stop work orders and things like that. And then, you know, finally, there's a little use provision for unfair business practices. We would have to go to the district attorney to enforce that, but if a business is actually. Receiving benefit by violating, you know, the orders and regulations of a of the local government, then they are subject to. Civil action with treble fines, so there are a number of remedies that we could pursue. But I do understand your your concern that it be something that is actually followed willingly and not just ignored.
Because in some situations, you you wanted to penalize somebody in some. In some situations, you simply want to charge, charge enough so that they will only. They, it's not a penalty, but it is a fee where they would only do something is if it has a very high value to the company. And that they do adequate restoration. And so I wonder if there are situations in which we would, in effect, like, like that to license exceptions, but charge. Enough so that they would not do it very often. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a fine or violation, but it would be a, a, a licensed permission for for substantial fee.
So in the city's right of way, the city is prohibited from charging anything more than direct costs. Recover the administrative overhead. So we really couldn't charge a fee schedule based on those kinds of criteria. It would really have to be a fee that is based on cost recovery. Or the permit with penalties associated with permit violations.
So in effect, we just legally have the right to to have, to say this is not allowed except in emergencies. And if it's violated, then 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 we charge penalties for violating the ordinance.
Yes, that is, that is pretty much the situation.
All right, so that's all the questions that I have, so are there any comments from the public on this item?
A reminder to webinar attendees, if you wish to speak on the dig ones and pavement lifespan preservation policy. Please, in your logged on to Zoom, please raise your hand option on the right hand side of your screen. Or press star nine if you're on your phone. There is no public comment for this item, Mayor.
Right, and so now. Next would be, I would entertain a motion from the council on this side.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number two, zero, one dash two, zero, establishing and approving a dig ones and pavement lifespan preservation policy within the city right away.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, I will do this by roll call, council member Watson.
Aye.
Council member Pereira.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patino.
Aye.
I vote aye. Thank you, Natra.
Thank you very much.
Right, next is. New business item B, provide staff direction regarding potential building energy reach code types for new building electrification. May have a staff report, please, from environmental services director Andre.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. Yes, tonight, we're, we're just simply seeking some direction about some potential types of. Building energy reach codes or or exploring it and bringing back more detail for you. One of your council goals was for an all electric initiative. Variety of aspects to look forward, look at, and that included. Energy reach codes which are adopted by cities and counties. That meet or exceed the California building standards or Title twenty four, we've implemented reach codes before. Which basically reach, you know, beyond the minimum requirements and. At some point, the California codes catch up with them, but you you really gain a few years of. Higher level energy conservation when when this is done. So Arcata has a history of showing some leadership adopting energy reach codes, which which we have done in the past. In terms of your, your goal for this year. I just want to, you know, touch base on this before I go into some options for. For going forward. One of the all electric initiative goals was to work with the energy committee to review. A moratorium on installation of new or replacement natural gas appliances in city facilities. We've done that internally, we haven't caught up by it in an ordinance, but we'll, we'll probably come back to you with that. Additionally, develop strategies to require. And and or incentivize private development to utilize all electric construction. For new construction. Develop fifteen year plan to phase out natural gas citywide. Develop a electric fleet conversion plan. For the city vehicles and review each purchase and that is, that is in place and going on. Review city facilities. For potential solar installation and update our greenhouse gas reduction plan metric goals. So tonight, I just wanted to focus on. The aspect that deals with natural gas phase outs and. All electric construction or building reach codes, so the. Energy Committee, you know, took this on as a project to explore. And recently, if there are. October nineteen meeting. Subcommittee of the Energy Committee did a lot of work to explore some potential options for the city to consider. And. They did make a recommendation on one type of code. That's basically called the energy or the electric preferred, electric ready. Option and, you know, before, before we, you know. Worked on an ordinance language to bring back to you, we wanted to make sure we're on on the right track here. With the city council's direction on what type of. Reach, well, one, should we pursue a reach code, an all electric or electric prefer type reach code? And then if that direction was to, yeah, go, go do that, then we bring back detail. Of an ordinance in a, in a month, perhaps, month and a half. For for adoption. Just. Just to assure this because I know that this council's adopted reach codes for. One thing they have to have, and that is cost efficiency. That's and all the options that are out there on the order or the code ordinances that we choose from. Are pretty much preexisting, although you can customize them a bit for your community and. There's a long list of cities who have adopted reach codes that we. Communicated with, especially. Staff Julie Meander and Emily Benby and the Energy Committee, just to track, track these. So I mentioned some choices, higher level choices of types, one is the electric preferred. Energy or electric ready and that's what the Energy Committee. Explored or subcommittee recently. And. What that one does is encourage all electric. Space heating, water heating, clothes drying, cooktops, building designs by requiring mixed fuel projects which use natural gas. To exceed the code by specified performance margin. And all electric projects need only to meet the baseline state code. So these mixed fuel projects may be required to implement electric readiness measures, including pre wiring facility anticipated. Future installation of electric appliances. Cities with those preferred codes include Davis, Palo Alto, San Francisco, San Jose, San Luis Obso, San Mateo. And Santa Monica. Another option for the council to provide direct. Another option for the council to provide direction on is an all electric energy beach code. And this one goes further, requires specific in use to install electric appliances with, with some exceptions. And we can talk about what those exceptions might be. An example that we attached to our staff report is the Santa Rosa ordinance that they adopted in 2019. Another, another higher level possibility is to pursue a natural gas ban code ordinance, basically prohibiting in new buildings natural gas from being installed. And it's more aggressive than the all electric or the electric preferred model reach codes. An example of this type is the city of Berkeley. We attached that one as well. So in terms, terms of which direction we go, all of these are lined up with our greenhouse gas production policies and our climate, climate action plan intent, Energy Committee. I, I mentioned, you know, made a, made a recommendation, but they, as well as staff, are looking for, you know, additional feedback from the council before we take any other affirmative steps to, to bring something back to you. Also in the staff report, I attached the the research of the subcommittee of the Energy Committee that they presented at their special meeting in October. And I know other staff and the Energy Committee Chair, George Williams, can, can provide answers to any questions you might have. There's been a flurry of communication, and I'll turn it over right now to Julie Meander. We didn't want to provide too much detail at this point, but just kind of, kind of higher level. What, what, what the flavor of the choices here for the council to go forward with look like. So I'll turn it over to Deputy Director Neander and Emily Binby, Formal Programs Manager, to fill in any gaps. So I may have left and just kind of introduced in this topic. Because we want to get, get the most we can from the council tonight on, on direction. So Julie.
Good evening, mayor, council, city manager. So the, the subcommittee really has been very active and has really looked at a lot. And so they really were, they really presented to the full committee just in October. So there was no real decision made other than to go forward and to really look at some potential ordinance options in that category. And that really involved looking at an electric preferred, so that if you had an all electric building, you just had to meet the or reach code, the existing California code for building. But if you were not going to be an all electric building, then you would have to meet some additional energy efficiency measures if you were not going to be all electric. So that's where they were going. They were also looking at not just low rise residential or a single family, but they were looking at multifamily. And they were also looking at what the potential was for our commercial buildings as well. So that's as far as the committee had gotten in terms of their research. And I believe the PowerPoint that they put together is part of your packet. I don't know if you have questions about that. And I'm not sure. I did text George because he had another meeting and I'm not sure if he's on yet. I haven't gotten a response from him on my phone yet. So.
He is here. Yeah.
Oh, yes. Oh, good.
Excellent. As the panelist, so.
Okay, excellent. So I don't know if George wants to add anything to what I've got. I, I think we're here to answer any questions as well. We have also been in touch with Amy Ryder and the decarbonization group. So we're, we're working with them pretty regularly. And she keeps us updated as to what different municipalities have, or, you know, passed which ordinances and what types and what those things are. And we do have a whole spreadsheet related to that as well. And I know that there's just recently also, there's been some more information on the city of San Francisco and their natural gas ban, which is a little bit different than Berkeley's and that they do provide more exceptions for restaurants and other entities that really feel that, you know, for them to operate well, they can't really give up natural gas completely. So we have a little bit of information on that, and that came from another one of our committee members. Guellen Poliaga also provided that information. So the, the committee is continuing to look at these different options. And certainly I think they're very interested in understanding and hearing what the council has to say as well.
So as, as far as questions or comments, could we start with Vice Mayor Patina?
Yeah.
Really quick, really, did, did we want to let, do we want to let George?
Oh, I didn't, oh, I didn't, oh, I didn't know. If George is available, he should go ahead then.
I don't know if you can see me. Thank you, members of the council staff. And yes, this is something that the Arcata Energy Committee is really looking at very closely. I want to acknowledge the efforts of our subcommittee, Jim Zolick, Guellen Poliaga, and Andrea Alston. They are largely responsible with staff assistance for putting the materials together that you have in your packet tonight. And we, we carefully considered a range of options, but really feel that for Arcata, the electric preferred is, is one that we wanted to proceed with. So we're scheduled to meet again a little later this month, November 30th. We have a scheduled committee meeting. We're going to continue to work on drafting and ordinance that we'd like to bring back to council possibly in, in December, working with, with staff. But just want to reiterate what you've heard in the presentation. Or it would clearly be all electric projects are, are incentivized, are the clear preference. And if there is a mixed fuel project, there's a higher standard for efficiency. We think with the emphasis on renewables coming forward, there's just a lot of opportunity for electricity being our primary power source, energy source, and want to be able to capture that. And we are, but as Mark pointed out, it has to be cost effective. And in your packet, you'll see quite a bit of attention was paid towards cost effectiveness for the code provisions moving forward. So that's really what I wanted to present. We would like to hear staff, council direction. But we, the commission, the committee did unanimously recommend electric preferred, and we're prepared to move forward with your direction. Thank you.
So back to council now, Vice Mayor Patina.
Yeah, I, I look at the banning natural gas to be the simplest, easiest, clearest way to move ahead on this. It's the most aggressive, it'll do us the most good. And remember, this is only on new construction. I mean, you look around Arcata, how much new construction is going to go on here? So for me, if we don't move on a banning natural gas, we're not going to get much out of any kind of reach code. So that's, that's where I am. I, I would like to move ahead with that. Thank you.
Council member Pereira.
Yeah, first of all, thank you, George, and to the committee for all your work on it. I think our Energy Committee has incredible technical expertise that has been, I think, I fully trust the Energy Committee to be up to the task of this. I think when I'm looking at the, these three different options, I think it would be helpful to get a little bit more background on what were the, what was the criteria to determine, to prioritize electric preferred over full? And if, if that is something that you can speak to tonight, great. If it is something that the Energy Committee would need to have more of a discussion on of why, like, if we were looking at both full electrification versus electric preferred, what would be the pros and cons of those? That, that's kind of what I'm looking at. So George, I'll just go to you and then I have another point or after that. If there's anything that you feel you could speak to about the Energy Committee's decision to look specifically electric preferred, or if it's something you think there would need to be more dialogue about comparing it to full electrification.
Thank you, council member. We would like to have a little bit of more discussion. At our October meeting, that was really the first time we were, had the benefit of the subcommittee's research. They had waived the options. But we did, we did look most closely at electric preferred. And based on council direction, we would certainly be able to go back and do a little bit more comparison.
If I could add just a little bit to that, sorry, I didn't want to jump in, but I did want to add that I know that Guellen and Jim and Andrea all looked at that and felt that, you know, they, they are committed to keep moving forward on a natural gas ban also. And I think that they looked at this reach code and this electric preferred as kind of that first step as we work towards the natural gas ban. So I think that that was one of the things that they were looking at as a consideration as opposed to full electric. It was a way to help people transition to that eventually. And I don't want to really put words in their mouths, but I know that that was certainly part of the discussion that came up.
And Jim Zolick is also available.
Oh, good, Jim.
On the meeting, if you wanted to defer to him, George, for anything.
Jim, I don't know how much of this conversation you've already been able to listen to, but the council is wanting to hear about the other alternatives that the subcommittee considered, all electric, natural gas, and in addition to the electric prefer. So the, the comments on that?
Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry, I just, I lost track of, of time and then realized, oh my goodness. Got to check, see if I can, see if I haven't, if I'm not too late. So let, let's see if I can sort of quickly summarize. So the, the subcommittee was myself, Guellen Poliaga and Andrea Alston. And we did, and, and staff was tremendous help as well. And then, and then there, Misty, and I'm forgetting Misty's last name, but she's a consultant that.
Bruceary.
Really? I'm sorry, what was that, Michael?
I'm Misty Bruceary.
Bruceary, thank you. Who, who provides consultant services to communities that are, that are looking to do reach codes. So we did look at, at what other communities had been doing. And, you know, we certainly, so, you know, as you know, some communities have, have banned out natural gas outright, not through the building code, but through their, I forget what the, you know, other, other powers. I'm forgetting the exact terminology at the moment.
Police, police power.
Police powers, okay. And so that certainly is an option and it, it's, I mean, that, that's a way that, that Arcata could choose to go. I know that a number of communities have done that. There have been some issues, potential issues with lawsuits and things like that. So that was one option. That was, that was not a, a, a reach code. And with the reach codes, the, the thing is, is that they're, they really only apply for a three year cycle because that's the, the building code cycle. And so you basically, your, your reach code applies to the, to that, that three year cycle of the building code. So we decided that we really needed to, if we were going to do a reach code, you need to do it, you know, early in that three year cycle. Otherwise, you know, if you do it at the end, then it's, it expires, you know, right as it goes in. And actually, the last, the last time we did the, the reach code, it, it applied for about half the cycle. So we really put our focus on what are the options in terms of a reach code? And within the reach code, there is electric preferred and there is all electric required. The thing is that, so with all electric required, you're not, you're not banning natural gas. Doesn't mean that there can't be a natural gas hookup for the facility. It just means that you're requiring electric, things like electric heat and, and so forth. Most of the communities that are doing all electric required have exceptions for things like gas ranges, perhaps gas fireplaces and other, 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 you know, other potential exceptions as well. So it, it ends up not really being a, a gas ban, but so we did, we looked at that and, and then a number of communities have done what, what we ended up settling on as a recommendation, which is the electric preferred, which basically, you know, sets a, so, so the reach code here is really for, for, for all electric construction, people need to meet the current building code. So there's actually not really a reach code other than the fact that you're, that it's, that there, it has to be all electric construction. But anybody could choose to do all electric construction today and would need to meet the current building code. What we're saying, that's fine. As long as people do all electric, they have to meet the existing building code. If they choose not to do all electric and choose to do natural gas, then we're, we are stipulating that they need to go beyond the current building code and do essentially a reach code, a more efficient ener, energy code than the current state code. And that's based on these consultant reports that have been done statewide. And because anything we, anything we adopt has to be, you know, shown to be cost effective. And these, these consultant reports have done that on a statewide basis by climate zone. So we can basically tie our, our decision to climate zone one, right, the thin strip along the coastline. So it basically requires additional energy efficiency. The other thing that we chose to do is also require for anybody who, who does a mixed fuel building, that they have to have it electric ready. So that means that, you know, acknowledging that in the future, we're, we're headed toward all electric. So if, for some reason, they decide that they really don't want to do all electric now, they do the, the mixed fuel, but they meet a higher energy efficiency than they would have to meet for the standard code. They also have to make sure that their building is ready for, to go all electric. And, and that basically means things like the size of the panel. You know, basically the electrical infrastructure needs to be sized such that you could switch out the, the gas heating for electric heat pumps, for instance, or switch out the, an electric range, or I'm sorry, gas range for an electric range, a gas dryer for an electric dryer in the future. And because, you know, clear, i- if, if you're not electric ready, it's a very big retrofit to then, you know, redo all the electrical system, upgrade the panel, upgrade all the wiring and everything to be able to go all electric. So this is saying, you need to build the infrastructure for all electric, but you can go natural gas at this point. And, and then the other thing we were suggesting for all buildings, not just, not just the, the mixed fuel, but, but all buildings be EV ready as well. So electric ready for, for electric vehicles. The, you know, the feeling is that and, and I, you know, I, I wish Guellen were on the call because his, actually, some of the folks that he works with at, at TRC companies actually does, it works on these consultant reports. So he has a bit more background than I do. But his feeling is that, you know, there's a good chance that a lot of folks are just going to go the all electric route because essentially it'll be, it'll, it'll be easier for them to do. And, you know, there's kind of no reason not to do it at this point. But it does keep, it does give people an option and it does avoid the, the issues of lawsuits and so forth. And I think, you know, I think our feeling at this point is there wasn't, there wasn't much push, pushback in, in the last, the last code cycle when we did the reach code. And, and maybe there will be little to no pushback now. But, you know, a, a, an, an all out ban on natural gas is, is, is a big step. But, you know, if that's something that's, that's chosen, I mean, there's, you know, also, it's, it's important to realize, we're only talking about new construction here. And the amount of new construction is, 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 you know, it's not affecting a lot of our building stock, right? I mean, the, the things that we really need to focus on to make a big difference is existing construction. Because that's where the large, vast majority of our, what is what our building stock is. And, you know, it, it is what it is. And, and so that's kind of a different focus for the committee. And we are looking at options for retrofits, but that's, that's probably a conversation for another day. I'll, I'll stop there. I don't, I'm not sure how well I've answered your questions, but I'm happy to try to elaborate if there are further questions. I'll, I'll stop there. I don't, I'm not sure how well I've answered your questions, but I'm happy to try to elaborate if there are further questions.
Brett, do you have any questions or comments?
I might have the same question as Councilmember Pereira, and I feel like we did get an answer. You know, I think the Energy Committee's explanation makes sense. And I, I'd like to hear the, the Mayor's opinion at this point.
Right. Well, you know, it's, it's clear that at the, the global level, we have a crisis, that we've, we've have wildfire. I, I, I don't think any of the Councilmembers would disagree with this, that we've, we have wildfires, we have extreme weather events. And we've had an administration that's now going to be going out, who's, who's been hostile to anything to, and withdrew from the, the Paris Accords. It's been hostile to do anything. And so we have an increasing crisis. Arcade itself is not going to make a big difference, but I think that we need to join with other cities and do the maximum. Natural gas is a substantial greenhouse gas impact in two ways. One is from leaks, which are generating global warming impacts that roughly double the, the impact from, from, uh, CO2 from natural gas combustion alone. So, you know, we're entering a more extreme situation that 10 years ago, 15 years ago, natural gas was looked at as a bridge fuel from coal and oil to, to something cleaner. And we've wasted 15 years to a large extent as a country and, and, and to some extent as a community. So I think that time is really of the essence at this point, that professionally, I've worked on, on the order of 200 large multifamily housing projects throughout California. And about 125 of those have actually been built. And vast majority of them have been all-electric, that our developers are finding these are cost-effective. And I think the important things here, at the very least, are to ban natural gas for space heating and water heating. That cooking is secondary, clothes drying is secondary, that just those two applications of space heating and water heating generate 80 to 90% of total greenhouse gas emissions of a, of a resident. So I think if we're going, if we're not going to go for banning natural gas completely, although I favor that, that requiring electric space heating, requiring electric water heating, I think are the critical elements that we need to have. If somebody likes natural gas for cooking, I don't think that's a big deal, or for clothes drying, I don't think that's a big deal. But I think that we really don't, as, as, as a community or a society, we don't have luxury of waiting and, and hoping that, that people will, will choose all-electric. If we go with the reach code of electric preferred, somebody goes with, with mixed-fuel natural gas, even with a higher performance requirement, they're only going to be reducing their greenhouse gas emissions by on the order of 10 to 20%, which is not a very big reduction, where if we require electric spacing and water heating, then we're going to have on the order of 80, 90% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. The other aspect of this is that most of our electricity is being contracted for by RCA. And RCA is committed to 100% renewable sources for electricity. And so if, if somebody is, is going to be heating, spacing or water heating with electricity, and RCA goes to 100% renewable sources, that means zero emissions for the, for those applications. So, um, I feel that this, this, locally, Dan Coe, who's one of the, one of the clients from my consulting business, has gone to all-electric for all the multifamily housing projects that they've worked on. It's been cost-effective for them. I've also met with a, a substantial number of small developers and familiarized them with all-electric construction, and they're becoming comfortable with that. So that's the direction I would like to see, at the minimum, requiring all-electric new construction for spacing, or requiring electric for spacing and water heating, but ideally going to, uh, requiring all, all-electric for projects. What we have found in our analysis from my consulting business is that it's actually less expensive to do all-electric. That the biggest expense is connection fees to PG&E, and the second expense is running the piping for natural gas. So it actually can save money for developers. But I think what tends to happen is people go with what they're familiar with, and what they're familiar with is using natural gas. So I think that we need to make it mandatory and not voluntary for them to, to, to use electricity, at least for space eating and water heating, but ideally for all their construction.
And then where are we in this building code cycle?
The, what, what we're under now is called the 2019 Building Code, which went into effect in January of this year and will last most likely till January of 2022. And that, then the 22, 22 energy code will greatly restrict use of natural gas. It won't ban it, but it's going to very heavily favor use of electricity. The, the current code requires a solar PV. And it is, is basically neutral between natural gas and electricity, which is an improvement over a previous code. The next code will favor all-electric construction, but not requiring.
Thanks. Those are, that's all the questions I have for now.
If I may, there was one comment that I wanted to make, that I just feels and given that we do, we, it looks like we'll probably have a lot of public comment on this item, so I feel like I should just share a, a thought I have from a process perspective on this, given the timing of what if we were to hypothetically say, here is clear-cut direction that we want to give to the Energy Committee and staff to come back with a specific ordinance. Based on our meeting schedule, it would overlap with new, new Councilmembers coming on board. And for me, I mean, this, this for me, what I think would be important to consider is giving our, a new Council the opportunity to have a chance to give some direction on this as well. I think that there's direction that we can give tonight. But for me, I, I feel like if, if the, if there was an interest in making a more specific direction for an ordinance that would come back for a vote, that would basically coincide and overlap with a transition of Councilmembers, given, I think, how big this policy is. I, I feel like we should get their, get an opportunity for, for their input as well. So I feel like that's important for me to say before there is public comment, because I'm not trying to, you know, derail anything, but I, I, I feel like it's important to just bring that up from a process perspective. I obviously understand the urgency of, of this, but just given that, how close it is to a transition, I just wanted to, to raise that. But I appreciate the what, what's been brought forward for us to look at. So anyways, I just wanted to say that before we went to public comment. Thank you.
So do we have members of the public who would like to comment on this item?
We do have members of the public. And just a reminder for those that are, those viewers that are logged on to Zoom, if you wish to provide public comment, please choose the raise your hand option on the right-hand side of your screen. And when it's your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and invited to speak, and each speaker will have two minutes. So it looks like our first speaker, the screen name is Scott Blunt.
Hello, and thank you for taking my comments. I want to express my support for the Mayor and the Vice Mayor and their more aggressive stance than the Energy Committee. I think an all-out ban is, is the right way to go. As they both pointed out, new construction is a very large, or sorry, it's a very small piece of this. And it sets the signal for the rest of society that this is where we're going. And, and, and what we really need is the existing buildings to, to start converting them. And, and the clear-cut signal that gas is done in our building starts with new construction. Go as far and as fast as you can now, and it will be rewarded for all of our generations and our children down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Our next speaker is screen name Becky Minton. Please go ahead, Becky.
Hello, good evening. I'm very pleased to be here tonight, see so many familiar faces, friends and former colleagues from my time at the City of Arcata. I, as with Scott, am also here to speak up in support of the Mayor and Vice Mayor recommendations. Regardless if the City of Arcata is prepared to move to a full natural gas ban, there are certainly other versions of reach codes which encourage all-electric for the sectors for whom it is found to be cost-effective, while allowing very carefully crafted, crafted exceptions for those other sectors where it is not yet cost-effective. For many communities, buildings are the largest greenhouse gas emitters outside of the transportation sector. Tackling these building-related emissions is going to be a crucial aspect of achieving climate targets. Currently, as the Mayor noted, many forms of residential construction are currently cost-competitive when they go all-electric. So there's really no reason why this should not be considered. I also want to point out that any new natural gas appliance or natural gas hookup that we install for new construction, we are stuck with. Not only for the lifetime of that appliance, but also for any costs that the ratepayers would have to incur for the decommissioning of that natural gas infrastructure when California moves, uh, it has signaled for a fully decarbonized system. Excuse me. As more and more communities, currently more than 39 jurisdictions across California, have moved towards electric or electric preferred in some version or another, as more of these ratepayers depart the gas infrastructure system, that will leave a smaller pool of gas ratepayers overall to bear the cost of those gas decommissioning expenses. Therefore, it also makes good economic sense for the City of Arcata to take a leadership position, get their construction industry prepared for the inevitable shift to all-electric, and really focus on those sectors where it makes perfect common sense already. I applaud the city as always for being such a leader in the climate change movement. It is always my pleasure to track what the City of Arcata is up to. So thank you for continuing your leadership role. And have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
And while we're teeing up the next one, for those that, of you that remember, Becky Minton was our second energy specialist in the City of Arcata years back. So nice to see how well we trained you and how great you've done in the energy field, moving out of Humboldt County.
And our next speaker has screen name Sean Armstrong. Please go ahead, Sean.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilmembers and staff. So I wanted to point out that when you guys made a 5-0 vote in favor of an all-electric building code, which is not a reach code per se, it's a, the use of your police powers. When you voted that as a city goal in 2018, that was the inspiration for the rest of the state. It was literally the first public vote by a majority, which is unanimous, in North America to ban natural gas. You followed Amsterdam. And since then, 40 other cities in the State of California have followed your lead. And we've been waiting, you know, for the City of Arcata to, to fulfill on what it committed to at the time. Now, in that period of time, Britain has already announced that it will have a complete gas ban for all construction in 2023. They've announced that by 2030, they will replace all their fossil fuel in buildings. They're, they're a large investment of public dollars. New York City, this last week, announced that by 2030, they would have completely electrified all of the public housing. They're the largest real estate owner in New York City, and they will have electrified all of their buildings by 2030, as well as all the city-owned buildings. This is something that Arcata started with your public vote. It was international news, not among newspapers that you know, but of all the green journals, that we were inspired by it. They started holding electrification expos down in the Bay Area every couple of months. And on behalf of Redwood Energy, I would go down and do a keynote speech for up to two hours. You know, I was flying up to Seattle and presenting, all because people are excited by your vote to try to ban gas completely from construction. So regardless of whether or not you fulfill on that commitment that you made through two separate votes in front of the public, saying that you would do this as one of your goals, you have already changed the world. So I congratulate you, and I hope you don't underestimate your impact. It has been huge. I've always spoken about what Arcata did. I'm from Arcata, I'll speak that, how amazing we are as a community, how many wonderful people who train to go out and make big change in the world. But we already did it. So I just hope that you, you complete your action. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Our next speaker has screen name 350 Humboldt. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Pat Carr, and I'm representing 350 Humboldt tonight. So I really want to pass on a lot of thanks to Mayor Winkler and to the City Council for showing the kind of leadership that has led to this conversation happening tonight. I really second what Sean Armstrong was just talking about in terms of Arcata having been a leader in getting out of natural gas. And so 350 Humboldt, we are very much in support of any measure that would end natural gas use in new housing and commercial buildings in Arcata. Primarily, we think that time is of the essence, both in terms of our climate, but also in terms of our economy. The sooner that Arcata can begin getting our housing and commercial building stock out of natural gas, the better for our economy over the coming years. And that's related to the high likelihood that natural gas is simply on its way out. Its days are numbered in terms of being the dominant fuel used to heat houses and businesses. It'll probably take years for it to be completely faded out, but over that time, fewer people are going to be using gas, which means that the costs of maintaining the natural gas infrastructure are going to be shared among a declining pool of customers. And as you may know, that natural gas infrastructure has been very problematic. There have been catastrophic explosions and gas leaks. And so we really want to be moving out of that. Many of the people who will be stuck with natural gas over the coming years will potentially be those least able to, on their own power, and no pun intended, on their own power retrofit into all-electric housing because of the simple costs. So the sooner that we can start moving new buildings into being all-electric, that's going to be very advantageous for lower-income folks and renters for boosting the general economy here in Humboldt. I want to end by just saying, I very much appreciate that this is on the agenda and wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker has screen name Andrew Chu. Please go ahead, Andrew.
Hi, I'd also like to give a testimonial in favor of the natural gas ban. I'm actually a high schooler, and I want to offer my perspective as a youth and student, hopefully to give you some context for what some of your other constituents may be thinking. I want to begin by saying that I've always lived in California. And throughout the ups and downs of federal political turmoil, it's always given me pride to be able to say that I was from California, the unquestioned progressive leader in building a sustainable and equitable future. And for, for the past four years, all of us across the state really have stood strong in the face of a socially regressive and morally corrupt presidential administration. Every lawsuit by Javier Becerra filed against the federal government brought me hope for our situation. Yet, I really want to emphasize that now is not the time to retreat into complacency when we're confronted with such an urgent existential threat like global warming. And all that stands between us and the solution is just the political willpower to catalyze this change. I truly believe that local legislation eliminating natural gas in new buildings would be both a symbolic and a material step forward in combating climate change. In such an affluent state like California, I, I think it's absolutely inexcusable to, to shrug and move on from such a proposal. Ordinances such as these are one of our primary tools to rapidly decarbonize the residential and industrial sectors. And anything less than an ambitious plan here will simply not suffice. We, the students, the children and the activists, look towards your leadership as a precedent-setting, paradigm-shifting signal to the rest of the world. If not us, at the end of the day, who, who else will make and inspire these changes? California, as I'm sure you know, is home to the fifth-largest California, as I'm sure you know, is home to the fifth-largest economy globally. And taking such ambitious action here in Arcata will ripple across the state, the nation, and ultimately the planet. Every decision is magnified, and if you choose to ignore this issue, we resign ourselves to bleak fate. But I know that today, you are now empowered to make true change in your community and beyond. And I hope that Arcata can become part of the solution through a ban on gas in new buildings and join the groundbreaking climate work being done by others. Thank you, and I really appreciate you considering this proposal.
Thank you. Okay, just checking if there are any new public comment on this item. That concludes public comment for this item.
All right, now, back to council. So if any member of council would like to propose a direction or a motion, please go ahead.
I'd like to propose a motion that we have at the Energy Committee. Given that they've already given us a recommendation for electric preferred, I would like to see them evaluate that recommendation compared to all-electric reach code. Compare it to an actual, a natural gas ban, including an alternative where it's purely just for space heating and water heating. I'd like for them to do that comparison. So that way, at the point where we're making a final decision, that has been fully vetted by the Energy Committee, so that we can move forward. If it's truly that, you know, we're looking at, you know, we want to move forward, this council wants to move forward with the natural gas ban, then we've at least taken the step to look at what would be the difference between just doing space heating and water heating or doing a full ban. I think having that, the Energy Committee vet that, if there's a way that they can, you know, do that at their next meeting, recognizing that we do want to have something come back quickly to the council. But I think that would also be helpful for when there is that transition of new council members. Then that work has already happened. Because what I would hate to see happen is that we give a very specific direction tonight, but at the point where it's actually being finalized, we have new council members that didn't necessarily have the opportunity to give that specific direction. So I think using this time to fully vet those options and indicating, if we want to indicate a preference for one tonight to really emphasize natural gas ban, that's great. But my motion would be to have the Energy Committee to look at these options, including an alternative natural gas ban of space heating and water heating. That way, all the options are considered, and we really have the Energy Committee's insights on those. So that's what I'm going to be proposing. Okay.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no, I was gonna say, I figured I wasn't actually gonna get a second on that, but gotta put it out there.
I'm so close. No, I mean, I like where you're going with it. I think you make a strong point about leaving some space for the new council to be able to weigh in on it. And I also, you know, I agree that, you know, time is of the essence. And I'm, so I'm just wondering, on that idea of giving direction to the Energy Committee, I guess what I was thinking is to bring back, just to ask just the committee to come back with potential language on a all-electric energy, on the all-electric energy option. Yeah, I don't know, because I feel like it wouldn't require a lot of staff time. We wouldn't be spending a lot of resources. It would give us that opportunity to compare, because they have done a significant amount of work on the electric preferred. I noticed in the packet, in the presentation, looked like kind of a PowerPoint that was included. They had said that at previous meetings, they dismissed the all-electric required option. So yeah, to give direction to the committee to, I guess, more focused on the all-electric required option and bring back information on that.
Yeah, I, so actually, sorry, I'll pause. So if someone wants to make a second on that.
And I didn't make a motion. I just.
Oh, you didn't make a motion? Okay. Yes. Yeah, I think, given what the mayor and vice mayor have stated, a strong preference for a natural gas ban, and given the interest in looking at all-electric, I think that's why we should have the Energy Committee, given that they've already done work on electric preferred, just being able to provide that comparison of, here would be the impact of doing all-electric versus, you know, the information we already have for electric preferred, and then compare that to what it would look like to do an actual gas ban, or if there was that alternative option of just purely doing it for space heating and water heating. Just having that, I guess maybe a question for, do we have George still on the line? I guess a question for George would be, is that something that the Energy Committee would be able to look at for their, for their next meeting, if that's enough time for that?
Our next meeting is scheduled for the end of November. I just would like the opportunity to confer with staff to make sure they feel they can get prepared.
As staff, we can make that happen if it's the council's direction.
Okay, so I, yeah, thank you. I mean, that's, that's what I would be proposing is, if that's the will of the council.
I would like the primary focus, obviously, to be on, on, on natural gas ban, either, as I said, for, for all uses or for space heating and water heating. And for that to be the, the primary focus of the committee to come back before the next meeting, since they have already focused on, on natural gas preferred. And have them report back to the council for the December 4th meeting.
You mean all-electric preferred?
Yeah, all-electric preferred. Not all-electric prefer, all-electric required, or, you know, either mandate all-electric or mandate all-electric or electric for space heating and water heating. I want that to be, to be the focus of, of the work of the committee. And a direction to the committee.
Yeah, Michael, I support what you're saying, because if we actually do all-electric energy reach code, basically, for new construction, it's going to end up being sort of a natural gas ban. So, you know, why run anything, any pipes in there? Or any of the associated equipment you need for natural gas? If it's an all-electric energy reach code, you're just not going to do it. So basically, it'll, in effect, create a natural gas ban, I believe. So I support that, for sure.
So I'm hearing some willingness by the mayor to send it back to the Energy Committee. And I, you know, maybe a difference in, in ideas of what that would be said, what would be requested by them from the mayor and council member, and I'm just wondering if we can, I don't know, can we compromise here?
I mean, I think that's, that's a funny point, Councilmember Watson, because I do feel like what I'm proposing as a motion is trying to encapsulate, I think, that interest in, you know, we have two council members expressing a strong interest for a natural gas ban, whether that's, you know, purely for space heating or water heating, or all, you know, all-out. Also hearing an interest in looking at all-electric. And I think, given that we're not necessarily, you know, unified on what the path forward is, and recognizing that this is really coming at a fork in the road, and we're going to have a council transition at the point where if December 4th was the date for the, something more formalized to come back to the council, even if we introduced that ordinance for it to actually be codified, we would have a new council at that point. And so that's why I'm bringing up this as process, not necessarily specific to the policy, but just going, this is a big policy. If there's more information, we should be getting from the Energy Committee so that, at the point where we have a new council, all that information is there and ready to go. So we're not leaving anything out. That, that's what I'm hoping that we can accomplish. Not to leave anything, any stone unturned at the point where something's being finalized. And I recognize if, you know, we view that differently, but in terms of my colleagues in the council. But that's just where, where I'm coming from.
Well, I think that ultimately, that whatever policy direction we choose is going to be adopted by a new council. I think that's clear. And that we're, and even if something were introduced, it could, it could be modified before it's adopted, if it came to that. And that would be the decision at the next council meeting as to if we have research and, and, and direction from the council to look at natural gas bans, that will come back to the council on the 4th. And then we can decide at that point either to introduce the ordinance or to just continue it for more action by the next council.
I guess I just don't see how the Energy Committee is going to meet at the end of November. It just doesn't seem realistic to me that we'd have something prepared by the December 4th meeting. And so that's, you know, what I'm thinking is, I guess I didn't see, I don't see the harm. If we did get, you know, more substantial direction to, just for example, to bring back an all-electric energy reach code language on that or a draft, I wasn't under the impression that it would be ready for council consideration until after the new council members took their seats. And then at that time, they could make adjustments to it, pass it as it is, or whatever they chose. Yeah.
So I'm just proposing that, that we give direction to the Energy Committee to investigate an all-electric or, or an all-electric reach code. And then, at that point, later in the month or sometime, that the, the new council can decide on specifics of what they're going to adopt.
And it sounds like that's what, that's part of what Councilmember Pereira's motion was, in addition to comparing it with the other options. So I feel like, I mean, right now, yeah, I mean, I think I'll second Councilmember Pereira's motion, because I feel like it kind of encapsulates everything.
Thank you.
All right. Any further comments by council? All right, and I'll do a poll. Vice Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Pereira?
Aye.
Councilmember Watson?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, thank you, George. And thank you, Jim, if you're still on. Right. Next is new business item C, discuss an annual award for community member of the year.
All right, so maybe we're pivoting from really weighty agenda items to something a little bit later. But you probably recall that your October city council meeting was actually an outgoing committee member that suggested to the council that the city established a community member of the year award, similar to what we do for business of the year award. And so that was requested just to be placed on an agenda for the council to have a very initial conversation, if this is something that you're interested in. And if you are, what are criteria that you would be interested in city staff utilizing to put that program together in terms of how we would nominate, how they would be reviewed, how the awards would be received, and how that recipient would be chose? So this is just a very initial conversation for the council to talk about, is this something that you are interested in? Would it be one category? Would it be more than one category? And then we could put together a program or not, depending on your direction tonight. So I will turn it back to the mayor to open up for discussion.
All right, so questions and comments, starting with Councilmember Pereira.
Actually, I'd like to defer, you know, to the mayor for putting this on the agenda and see if there was a particular vision. I see, you know, in our packet that there was a couple different examples. But I guess I would, I would be interested to get a little bit more background on kind of what was, what was being envisioned with, with this. And if there was a, a direction that any of my colleagues saw this going, but in particular the mayor, since it was put on the agenda for consideration.
Well, I mean, there's some outstanding members in our community, some of whom have, have served the community outside of public office for many years. And I thought it was important to recognize, and I, maybe long-term, we would want to go to additional categories. But what I was thinking of is just one, one award. And then, over time, then, then future councils could decide if they wanted to expand it to additional categories rather than just a single one. But I think it, it's, I think it's important, it sets a good, good example, and it encourages other community members to also act and, and recognizes that we, as a city government, appreciate actions by outstanding members of our community to, to, to do things that, you know, improve our community. So that's, that's where I'm going on this.
Okay, no, that's, that's helpful. I definitely understand that motivation. I guess in terms of like the two different examples, one seems like it's run by the city, you know, city of Fairfax, another one, Chamber of Commerce. So I didn't know if there was a vision of, is this coinciding? Like, this is a part of an existing event where this would be announced? Or is this a separate process? I mean, I guess that's what I'm wondering, is if you had any specifics around, around that for us to consider.
Well, what I'm thinking is that it would be decided by the council that, that what would happen is that, what I would think is, is that we would accept nominations from the community, either coming from individual community members doing nominations, organizations doing nominations, or city staff or members of the council doing nominations. And then the council, a subcommittee of the council would then make a decision among the nominations. And since the biggest award ceremony that we have is the Chamber of Commerce, you know, annual recognition ceremony, I thought it would be the easiest and the most natural for that to be part of that event.
I feel like the Chamber of Commerce is already a really long event. They already give out a lot of awards. And I'd like to see something where the council picked, and we just gave it to them at a council meeting. You know, maybe a plaque or something like that. And yeah, if it's just an open-to-the-community process where anybody can submit a nominee, and then it's the council or subcommittee that chose the person, that's kind of as, as much of a vision as I've come up with so far.
No, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Pacheco?
He may not have heard you.
Vice Mayor Pacheco, do you have a, a comment on, on the idea or specifics of a a community member of the year?
Yeah, I hear you clear. Somehow, a minute ago, there was no sound coming out of you. Anyways, here's what it is. For me, I'm not interested in this in general, because, you know, I just know two community members and that I would consider valuable and could be community member of the year. So if we're not going to limit the number of people that can apply, you may have a couple hundred that you get to go through. And who's going to do that? And, and really, I kind of lose the point of making somebody special. Now that we've been locked down equally, no matter how wealthy or. whatever we are through COVID, we come to realize that we're all community members of the year. And I, I'm not really up to select one. So I, I don't, I'm not interested in it. Let me say that. Thank you.
I mean, I'd also be fine with not doing it.
So it looks like you don't have enough interest in the council to go ahead with this thing? All right.
We do have a public comment waiting for this item?
Do, do we have a public comment on this?
We do have a public comment. A reminder, if anyone else wishes to comment, to look the raise your hand option on the right hand of your screen, or if you're calling in by phone, press star nine. And it does look like we have at least one, um, public comment. With screen ID, uh, it's our, we have one phone call in, so you will have two minutes to speak, please. Phone caller, please go ahead.
Hi, of course, it's Jane Woodward. And I recognize that there are many, many people who, um, are worthy of this, and perhaps it's worthwhile to have a standing committee that could accept these, or maybe we find another way to recognize people. But I think just as we recognize individuals who have served on our committees for a, a period of time. And I think we should be recognizing those of you who have served on city council because we're about to lose two of you, apparently. I think we ought to look for ways we can, um, celebrate people who have made significant contributions. And I think allowing people to recommend other people and taking the time to look at that and recognize them is certainly worthwhile. But I understand if you don't want to take on extra work, you got a lot on your plates already. But perhaps this is something you could delegate to a committee or create a committee to do that. I agree that it doesn't have to be done as part of the annual awards. But it can certainly be done as a kind of honorable mention through the city council itself. That's just what I was kind of thinking because we have some people, many people who have made major contributions. And I think it would be nice to recognize them. Doesn't have to be just one. There could be three or four in any given year that would allow more people to be celebrated. But I think it's a worthwhile thing to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other public comments for this item.
So any final comments from the council before we move on? Right? Next is oral written communications. This time is provided for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Uh, please raise your hand if you are on Zoom webinar or press star nine. Now, if you are on phone line and you would like to make a public comment. Speakers are limited to two minutes. When it is your, your time for public comment, the clerk will, uh, meet you and invite you to speak. So do we have any, uh, people who would like to make, uh, public comments at this time?
We do. This is for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. And we have, um, it's like it's, um, our phone caller again. Please go ahead.
Jane? Okay. It's, it's Jane again. And I simply want to take this opportunity to thank, uh, what appeared to be our two outgoing members for their outstanding service. That's Michael Winkler and Paul Patino, who have served our community with great enthusiasm and a tremendous amount of effort over quite a few number of years now. And since we don't have a formal process for doing that, even though we do when we have them on committees, I think we might consider doing that as well. But I want to thank you both personally because I've worked with you over the years in terms of, uh, being on, on the Economic Development Committee, et cetera. And I think you've been great. So thank you. You both deserve to be community members of the year as well.
That's all. Take care.
Thank you, Jane. There's no other public comment there. That concludes public comment.
All right, well, uh, thank you very much, Jane, for your, for your very kind thoughts, and I appreciate them very much, and I've appreciated working with you. Right. Uh, finally, council and staff reports. So do we have anything from staff at this time?
Um, no, just an update today, although maybe Vice Mayor Patino will do it from LAFCO, that, uh, they reviewed and approved our five-year municipal service review. So, uh, to keep us in line with our, our LAFCO process for some of the future annexations that will be, um, likely coming up with the Creekside Development and some of the city's own purchases this year.
Vice Mayor Patino?
Yeah, just to follow up, uh, with what Karen said, yeah, we, uh, we got approved, uh, with our MSR SOI, um, information and, uh, our plan, whatever you want to call it. And, um, uh, Creekside Development will probably come up next year. And, um, since I'm the city member on LAFCO, one of the two city members on LAFCO, um, and I'll be leaving, it's a great time for other council members and new council members to think about representing City of Arcata on LAFCO or asking to be a representative because the mayor's select committee will pick that person. So, um, it wa- it's a great thing to be on and, um, it's, it, it's really helpful. And, um, I'm glad for the opportunity that I had to get on it and uh, um, good luck to anybody else that wants to do it. So, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Pereira?
Uh, yeah, just a brief update regarding, um, the CRV buyback. This has been quite the, the roller coaster. Um, long story short, um, there was a, a grant that Cal Recycle said there was one slot left and that we were going to be able to apply for it as a region, as a county. The work was coming together, you know, we had, um, you know, the different businesses coming together. We had the county on board and, you know, it, it was all looking really great. And then Cal Recycle, uh, gave the slot to someone else. I don't know who, but, um, uh, so basically, that was like a last ditch effort to try and like revitalize something in the short term, uh, for CRV buyback in Humboldt County. Um, as you all know, this is a, a system that is failing across the state. It's dysfunctional. Our state representatives have been involved in many conversations about this. Our board did authorize the chair to send a letter to Assemblymember Wood and Senator McGuire, requesting, uh, that there be action, really concrete action on this in the next legislative session. It seems like there might be some momentum, um, that, that's happening that we're a, a part of. So the short answer, if you get a question about CRV buyback, is that we don't, we don't have it right now and that there's not something for the foreseeable future, and it's really disappointing. No fault of, no, there's been no lack of effort here locally. There's been an incredible amount of effort to make it happen. And unfortunately, the, there, there's just not a way for it to, to pencil out across the state, um, and here locally as well. So I just wanted to give you an all-in update because I know that is something that many people in our community have been asking about and ha- and, it's something that our board and HWB staff have really grappled with because it is something that is in high demand and, and provides an important service in our community. The other, uh, big news, um, is that our executive director, Jill Duffy, is retiring. And so recruitment, uh, process will be beginning soon, um, to find someone that will fill the shoes of Jill Duffy, which is a, a tall order. She's also tall, so I guess I, I don't know. There's a unplanned pun there. Anyways, so that's, that's the news. Thank you.
All right. Let's see, Councilmember Watson?
No, I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor Patino?
Yeah, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Let's see, I attended a, a meeting of, of Main Street that they had a very successful Halloween event, which was, uh, around the plaza and was, uh, done with appropriate social distancing. So, uh, people had a lot of fun with that. That was good. And, uh, they're getting all prepared for, uh, putting up the lights and doing the season of wonder and light. And, uh, and I hope it will be a, a very successful and, uh, and fun season for all of us, no matter how we choose to celebrate it. And, uh, I myself will be doing it by Zoom and, uh, staying physically at home, which I, I would encourage all of us to do under these circumstances with COVID. And also I've been participating in meetings of the Subcommittee of HCOG that is working on metrics for sustainable transportation. And, uh, we will be meeting again soon. And then tomorrow will be a meeting of RCA. And dates of future meetings, uh, we need to select a time for a special meeting to, uh, declare election results and swear in new council members. And, uh, suggested, uh, time is on December 10th. And, uh, if people can say what, uh, will be convenient for them, please go ahead.
And if I have, if I have some notice, I'm sure I can make any time work, whatever is best for the council.
Uh, Councilmember Pereira?
Um, yeah, December, December 10th, um, I can make work. As for the time, I'm flexible, uh, relatively. I know that we've typically done like a lunch hour. I guess I also don't know for, um, incoming council members if there's schedule conflict, so I can be flexible as to what the time is, but the date, um, I can, I can, I will be there.
Right. And, and Paul?
Yeah, it's, it's fine with me. Thank you.
Right, and, uh, tr- traditionally, we do this at, at noon, but what I would suggest is, uh, having staff check with the incoming council members and, uh, see if there is, would be a problem with, uh, us setting that, that time for them, if any of them would have trouble ma- making, making that time. And so what I would do is, is for us to tentatively set a time and, and then if we can quickly, uh, get back to them and, and I would say tentative time and, and, uh, would be possible, I think would be possible for us to, uh, to reschedule in, in case one of the incoming council members couldn't make that time.
Absolutely be possible to reschedule and we can check with them. And if we need to change that from noon, we can bring that back at your December 2nd meeting.
So do we need a, a motion to, to make at that time?
No, I think that's plenty of direction.
All right. So with that, we are adjourned.